Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Middlesex County Board of Chosen Freeholders, our regular meeting of Thursday, April 6. You all please rise for a moment of silence as we remember two public servants who cast away recently. One is Mayor South Brunswick, uh, Mayor of South Brunswick Frank Gametes, and former mayor and former councilman in Edison, Henry Kikowski. Thank you, place of allegiance.
Place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Here.
Freeholder Kenny?
Here.
Freeholder Koppel?
Here.
Freeholder Nara?
Here.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Here.
Freeholder Valenti?
Here.
Freeholder Director Rios?
Recognitions?
Um, yes. First recognition is proclaiming April 2017 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Middlesex County. Next is proclaim, proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Middlesex County. Next is proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month in Middlesex County. Next is recognizing Sheriff Mildred Scott as she is honored as law enforcement humanitarian at the American Conference on Diversity on Thursday, April 6, 2017. Next is recognizing Eagle Scout Robert Hindges as he attains Eagle Scout status. Next is recognizing Eagle Scout Joseph Mantinet as he attains Eagle Scout stat, Eagle Scout status. And last is recognizing Eagle Scout Philip Duddy as he attains Eagle Scout status.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolutions?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes. And we have some presentations tonight. I know that Kenny Armwood's gonna start off our first one into a presentation on Parkinson's Disease. Al.
(laughter) Up in that chair. Okay. Okay. I'm joined here by Shalina Williams and a guy who says his name is Al. I don't know if I believe him or not. Um, one of the things that, uh, one of the many things that I admire about Al and his fight with Parkinson's is, uh, his optimism. And I always remember his quote from when he spoke over at Kirkpatrick Chapel, I believe, on Rutgers campus was just because it's cloudy doesn't mean the sun isn't shining. Um, and I think that's something that we can all take with us in whatever our daily battles are, um, whether it's illness, disease, or just the day-to-day stuff that we go through in life. Um, but through it all, um, I've known Al for several years from Piscataway, and, uh, he's never shied away from this battle. I'm not sure I would be strong enough to fight the way that he's done and, uh, continue to smile and be so optimistic to help other people in their fights. So, uh, without further ado, I would like to present, uh, these two recognitions to Shalina and to Al. And, uh, I'm gonna step aside and let the people who are the main stars talk here at the microphone, so I'd like to present that one to you. Uh, I think we have one extra here. Okay. Yeah, take the extra one. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ken. My name is Alan Blyche. I'm the president of the New Jersey Chapter of the American Parkinson's Disease Association. Not only is this, uh, a special month for me, April is Parkinson's Awareness Month, but it was ten years ago this month that I was diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease. And I remember sitting in the doctor's office crying, saying, "That's not possible. I'm young, I'm healthy, I eat right, I exercise." He said, "Look at the bright side, that had you not been in such good physical condition, your symptoms would've shown up years earlier." And one of the few, or the only thing that they know that, that slows the progression of Parkinson's Disease is, um, exercise. Running, exercise, getting your heart rate. There's, there's many medications out there, and they really haven't changed over the last fifty years. But raising awareness through April is Parkinson's Awareness Month. I've come a long way in the last ten years. I'm not gonna talk too much longer, but I just wanna point out, in the last ten years, the challenges that I faced have gotten, the stronger they would come at me, the stronger I got. And finally, Parkinson's was, was taking its toll on me. Medications and their side effects and some, as we all know, that some of the side effects from the medications are worse than the symptoms of the disease. But that being said, um, I lose my train of thought, my train of thought. Sorry? Say, yeah, I lose my train of thought a lot. Um, I just wanna say that Parkinson's had gotten to the point where the medications, I, I couldn't eat by myself, I couldn't barely dress myself, buttoning shirts, I was shaking. Unbelievable. I couldn't, I couldn't read the newspaper, I couldn't sit at the table, it was a hell of a lot of things I couldn't do. Where it came to the point where I had a procedure called DBS, Deep Brain Simulation, literally two brain surgeries. And they controlled the tremor, there's still, Parkinson's is still there, it doesn't slow or, or, um, stop the progression, but it treats some of the symptoms. And I was going downhill, and I'm much better today, and I continue to exercise. And I continue to fight my fight against Parkinson's Disease. And I'd like to say to Kent Armwood, who's a good friend of mine, who's supported me very much over the years, that you, you stole my mojo again. If the, now, (laugh) just because, just because you can't see the light through the clouds doesn't mean the sun isn't shining. So, with that, I'll let her say a few words. The only thing I can say is keep the faith. Don't give up on yourself, no matter what the illness, no matter what, what we have in life. Sometimes that's all we have, and we have to deal with it and make the best of it. And it's not easy. It's not easy. But, thank you very much.[425.12][425.12](applause)
So, I won't take too much of your time. I just, he basically probably said everything that I have to say, but I'm just gonna add a couple more things, just, um, so everyone's aware. First, we wanted to thank the Freeholders for proclaiming April Parkinson's Awareness Month. The American Parkinson's Disease Association is the largest grassroots network dedicated to fighting Parkinson's Disease and works tirelessly to assist more than one million Americans to live life to the fullest in the face of this chronic neurological disorder. Part of this organization focuses on raising awareness. Our local chapter in New Jersey has made this possible with our free annual conference that will be held on April 8th at the Imperial Somerset. The other is one of our pride and joys that has been created in New Jersey. If you aren't aware, there are unique symptoms of Parkinson's that can be mishandled and misunderstood in emergency situations. The New Jersey Parkinson's Disease Public Awareness and Education Act, Act 2576, signed into New Jersey state law in December 2014, was driven by APDA's New Jersey Chapter President and the board members, and called specifically for the development of an educational program to educate and empower first responders to not only know the signs and symptoms to look for, but also to know how to best treat and care for people living with Parkinson's Disease. This has created a fire in other states, and yet, in New Jersey, we are still unaware of this video and act. Parkinson's is no longer grandfather's disease. Each year, we see more and more people being diagnosed. In 2016, there was a two-year-old that was diagnosed with Parkinson's Disease. Let that sit in your head for a second, two-years-old. What we ask in April is that you spread awareness of this disease and this program available to anyone that is interested. Thank you very much once again for proclaiming April Parkinson's Awareness Month.
Thank you.[536.82][536.82](applause) an inspiration to all of us, Alan, and keep up the great fight. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, Shante Nara's gonna, Freeholder Nara's gonna present the next one on sexual assault awareness with, uh, is anybody here for that presentation? Come on up.
the Freeholders' commitment to, uh, helping all our residents in Middlesex deal with issues related to, um, health and, uh, safety, is my committee, um, I, I'm truly personally honored that, uh, I am able to, uh, give this proclamation out. Um, standing with me here today are members of the Puerto Rican, Puerto Rican Action Board, and, uh, they have been partners who've worked tremendously hard to bring, uh, issues to light in, in this realm. And, uh, we have proclamations, and I'm gonna just read a portion of it and then make a comment. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the Observation of Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Middlesex County, including a lifelong mental health impact. And whereas sexual assault, sexual abuse, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating one in four girls and one in six boys are sexually assaulted before age eighteen, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support sexual survivors. Um, I wanted to pause here because there's another statistic that I am aware of, that as we sit here, every ninety-eight seconds, there is someone sexually assaulted in the United States. And if you think about that, that's every ninety-eight seconds, one of our fellow human beings is suffering a trauma that most of us here cannot possibly contemplate. And we set aside a month, uh, to call awareness to this, uh, issue, but it's something that needs to continue every day of the year, because we have people in our communities who are suffering, and many of them are suffering in silence. And I know the purpose of what this group is doing and the purpose of this month, especially in 2017, um, is a campaign to actually bring more people into the fight, and maybe some non-traditional groups into the fight, and reaching out, whether it's at colleges with fraternities and sororities, or coaches, or, um, church groups. But what we all need to do is understand that in a room this large, there's bound to be several people here who have been impacted, either directly or indirectly, by sexual assault in some form. And a lot of it has a basis in some form of bigotry, whether it's sexism, racism, homophobia, you name it, it's a long list. And we have to be committed as, uh, a people and as a community to fight back and to support the survivors so that they can rebuild their lives. So, with that said, I'm gonna turn it over, um, to Jose Montez, who's gonna make a statement on behalf of his group.
Thank you to all of the Freeholders and to everyone here. Just, uh, wanted to, you know, when you're the executive director of an organization, you get to be the one asked to speak and to take, almost take the credit for what other people do. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone appreciates the fact that the folks that are before you are the ones who make my job easier in order to serve this community, and that it really is a joint effort from everyone who you see and the over two-hundred-and-fifty members of our organization that are committed to make sure that folks understand what sexual assault means and the impact. I can tell you that I happen to have nine brothers and sisters, seven sisters, and unfortunately, the one-in-four statistic doesn't apply to my personal, like, experience. It unfortunately is a lot higher. And so, I happen to be the son of someone who lived through sexual assault and was the son of an environment that was attacked by sexual assault. And, and I happen to be one of those that wasn't as impacted directly from that. And because of that, my commitment has always been, and that's why when Lynette came and said to us, "We need to make this happen," there was no question. We need to make sure, and if I have to share to the world the experience that my family went through in order to let folks know that we cannot, we cannot be ashamed of those experiences, that we have to rise above, there has to be voice for the voiceless. The Puerto Rican Action Board is an organization that is committed to making sure that we stamp this out, and that we're, we're, we feel blessed to be able to, that you all can recognize that we love the idea that we can work with the county, with so many other organizations. You're invited tomorrow to our day full of Prab goes teal, where we have activities in our, in our, in our early childhood centers. The children are gonna learn about the impact of sexual assault. In our elementary school, middle school, and high school, folks are gonna learn, the young people are gonna learn about that. And from three to five, you're invited to come to our offices in 90 Jersey so that you could learn a little bit, and I look forward to seeing you there. And one thing that I just wanna point out is, is we're, as an organization, are here to serve. It's our forty-fifth anniversary this year, and we're looking forward to be a voice and to join those who have suffered through sexual assault. Ultimately, helping folks have the power to move forward and to make this community a better place. Thank you.[1026.56][1026.56](applause)
Month, the recognition of Fair Housing Month. Anybody here from that group?
Tonight, as the county Freeholders declare April Fair Housing Month, we are also recognizing several landlords who have partnered with, with the county to assist us in permanently housing homeless veterans, families, and individuals. While all the landlords recognize this evening our integral to our ending homelessness efforts, I would like to mention those who are able to be here with us this evening. Maureen Strong has been flexible, accepting tenants with credit issues, past evictions, and/or criminal backgrounds. She has also provided beautifully furnished apartments. Jim Zara has provided flexibility with rental amounts, waived credit checks, accepted low credit scores, and has assisted tenants moving into their new permanent housing. And Mark Weisberg is attentive to tenants' concerns and attempts to accommodate their housing needs. He has waived application fees, is flexible with rental amounts and credit scores, and has waived credit checks for some tenants. Those landlords not present have acted in similar ways. We appreciate all of these landlords' efforts to assist these tenants who have experienced homelessness and who work with Coming Home's case management staff to become not only good tenants, but better tenants than they ever had been before. We also understand that coming home with the continuum of care is organizing a landlord's advisory committee to develop a seminar to encourage more landlords throughout the county to overcome their fears and concerns about renting to former homeless individuals, families, and veterans. We encourage those landlords recognized this evening to join in that effort since they have come to know the experience of assisting people who need to find a place called home. Thank you so much for your efforts.[1233.33][1233.33](applause)
I want, is this on? I just wanna thank the county for all you do in, in helping and assisting in ending homelessness, I mean, through the creation of Coming Home and the provision of financial assistance in, in creating affordable housing, which is what homeless people need, are homes. Um, and in actually, in, in allowing this, uh, recognition ceremony of the landlords that have been helping all the participants of the, uh, Continuum of Care, this is an initiative of the Continuum of Care. And we know that, you know, you can create new housing, but we have some housing stock out there, and we have some wonderful landlords that we work with, and we thought, well, you know, there's still, we still need to change the face of homelessness. People still don't understand that anybody can become homeless, and it just like, you know, could be anybody here, you know, and that we need to, we need the landlords who get this and understand and with whom we work to assist us in broadening our network of landlords that we use, so to, you know, hopefully you'll help us be a model, and from the landlord perspective, let us, you know, know what, what other landlords might need to know in order to join our cause. So, thank you very much, and thank you.[1336.15][1336.15](applause)
Clerk correspondence?
Each realtor has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office since our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file in the office of the clerk of the board for reference.
Motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes, minutes for approval?
The Board of Chosen Freeholders' regular meeting, March 16th, 2017, at 7 o'clock PM.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder, uh, Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes. Uh, ordinances for introduction and first reading, the clerk will read ordinance 432 by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for 2017, 2018 general capital improvements for the Middlesex County Vocational and Technical High Schools located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $3 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3 million bonds or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation and authorizing a public hearing to be held Thursday, April 20th, 2017, at 7 o'clock PM, and authorizing publication thereof.
May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 432 by title only?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes. And the clerk will read ordinance by, uh, 433 by title only?
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various equipment and furniture and undertaking of the various 2017, 2018 capital improvements at and for facilities of Middlesex County College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $2 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2 million bonds or notes of the county for financing such appropriation and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, April 20th, 2017, at 7 o'clock PM, and publication thereof.
May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 433 by title only?
Motion.
May I have a second? Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes. And the clerk will now read ordinance 434 by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the undertaking of 2017, 2018 capital improvements at and for certain facilities of Middlesex County College located within the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $3,400,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,400,000 bonds or notes of the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey for financing such appropriation, the principal of an interest on the aggregate principal amount which would, which will be entitled to state aid pursuant to Chapter 12 of the laws of New Jersey of 1971, and authorizing the public hearing to be held on Thursday, April 20th, 2017, at 7 o'clock PM, and publication thereof.
Motion to adopt ordinance 434 by title only?
Motion.
Second? Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Tamaro?
Yes.
Freeholder, uh, Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Clerk, please read by title only, 430, ordinance 435.
Capital ordinance providing for various 2017 capital improvements by, in and for the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, and appropriating $16,500,000 from the capital improvement fund to pay for the cost thereof.
Motion to adopt 435?
Motion.
By title? Second? Roll call, please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes. And now, we'll go on to our Freeholder Reports, and Freeholder Kenneth Armwood.
Thank you, Deputy Director. From the Business Development and Education Department, the Office of Workforce Development, the Office of Workforce Development is collaborating with the city of Perth Amboy on a project which will create several hundred entry-level jobs. Recruitment will begin later this month for jobs in the transportation, logistics, and transportation labor sector. The Office of Workforce Development will be assisting candidates with complete, will be assisting candidates with completing online job applications at various sites in Perth Amboy. This is the first phase of the project, which will eventually lead to the creation of up to nine hundred jobs in total, with at least two or more major employers expected to locate in Perth Amboy in the near future. From the Office of Culture and Heritage, today marks the one-hundredth anniversary of America's entry into World War I. The war had a direct impact on New Jersey and Middlesex County. Over 3,400 New Jersey residents were killed in action or otherwise died while in United States service during the war. Middlesex County is planning a series of programs to commemorate the anniversary. Please join us this Sunday, April 9th, for a free lecture. Registration required, though, at 732-745-3030, extension 310, by historian Joe Bilby on New Jersey and the Great War, part of a series of events leading to a new World War I exhibit at the Lough House County Museum. The groundbreaking of the historic Edward Antle Garden will be held on Saturday, April 22nd, which is Earth Day. Edward Antle was a Piscataway farmer whose extensive cultivation of crops in the 1700s was award-winning and well-known in the colonies. The groundbreaking will be done using horse and plow provided by the Howell Living History Farm. The Antle Garden is an initiative in partnership with the Office of Extension Services and Rutgers Agricultural Experience Station to grow historic heirloom plants at East Jersey Old Town Village in Piscataway. From the Middlesex County Vocational and Technical High School Piscataway Campus, diners can enjoy a buffet dinner prepared by the students and participate in a professionally rendered thriller when the Piscataway Campus of the Middlesex County Vocational and Technical Schools presents its first murder mystery dinner. It is scheduled for Friday, May 19th, and will be held at the North Stilton Volunteer Fire Company. The cost is $45, and the program will benefit the school's Skills USA team. And that, Deputy Director, concludes my report. Thank you.
You're welcome. Freeholder Kenny?
Thank you, Deputy Director. Um, just a few different departments here. In Public Works, the office has been, uh, very active, uh, in filling potholes throughout the county on our county roads, so we can try and maintain a safe, uh- county on our county roads, so we can try and maintain a safe road surface. The one thing, Gary, do we have a site on our website that people can report potholes?
Yes.
We do. So if you have a pothole that you want to report, you can go to the Middlesex County website and report it through there, and we'll be able to take care of it and get it on our list. The million in, 2017 million in resurfacing is scheduled to start next week. Some of the projects to complete in April 2017, if everything goes well, is Shocks Crossing Road in Plainsboro, Cranberry Neck Road in Cranberry, and Main Street in Cranberry, just to name a few. There's other projects that'll be going on throughout the year. I also want to commend our Public Works and our Department of Public Works and the other departments that were involved in our snowstorms. With my schedule and some of the meetings that we've had, I haven't been able to acknowledge the fantastic work that was done by our county employees in clearing the roads during, especially the last snowstorm. That was a very tough storm, because once that snow became very wet, it became very hard to move. So they did a great job, as always, and you always get compliments when it comes to our county roads being cleared and people being able to move during inclement weather such as snow. The Middlesex County Parks and Recreation, Middlesex County Conservation Corp. has three volunteer events scheduled for this spring. We're gonna have a beach sweep with clean ocean action. You can join us on the shores of beautiful Raritan Bay at the annual springtime beach cleanup. Come out and help us clean up our shores and make them beautiful and debris-free. The date is Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The location is Raritan Bay Waterfront Park in South Amboy, Saraville, and registration is required. So you can contact Griffith Boyd at 732-745-3064, 732-745-3064, or Jackie Neal at 732-745-3936. That's 732-745-3936. And Rick, is, are they able to do this through the website, too? Are people able to sign up for this program through the website, the beach sweep on April 22nd?
We don't have a portal available yet to do an online registration.
Okay.
It's a simple phone call.
Okay. A phone call at this time will suffice. And then, Office of Facility Management's happy to report that the Office of Facility Management's completed the relocation of the Office of Environmental Health and the Office of Superintendent of Schools to 1315 Kennedy Boulevard in East Brunswick, and that relocation is gonna save the county money about $150,000 annually, $150,000 annually. And then the last item that I have is, we spoke here earlier about Parkinson's disease. We've pushed forward causes such as pancreatic cancer. The one good thing about this county freeholder board is it's very active in trying to bring the spotlight to very worthy causes, very, causes that need to have a spotlight on them, so that we know how we can participate, and we know that there's help out there if we're involved with one of those causes. One of the causes this month is, April is also Autism Awareness Month, and I just want to thank Carl from the county, the clerk's office, for working together to put the autism flag, autism awareness flag on our county flagpole. The missing puzzle piece flag is up there, it was up there last year, and it'll fly for this month to help bring awareness to autism. So, that's all I have, Deputy Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Koppel?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Director. As we heard tonight, we introduced four capital improvement bond ordinances that will continue to enhance our existing infrastructure. Ordinance 432, 433, 434, and 435 focus on the county's infrastructure and our educational system. Continued funding for our highways and bridges, infrastructure, park systems, building improvements to our emergency management center and juvenile detention center, as well as many other county projects. Featured funding provided for various campuses of our vocational school district, renovation of science labs, replacement of hot water circulation pumps, and repaving of driveways and parking utility and lighting improvements. For Middlesex County College, these ordinances will provide monies for minor capital infrastructure projects to maintain existing buildings, improvements to walkways, parking lots, and roadways, and utility and lighting improvements. By adopting these ordinances, we continue to stand firm in our commitment to offer the highest quality education to our students, because the cornerstone of a great community is a top-notch education. In addition, we continue to issue these bonds under our AAA rating umbrella, which results in direct savings for the county's taxpayers by lowering interest rates. These savings allow the county to undertake and fund additional capital improvements not otherwise possible. It is estimated that in the last 15 years, the county has saved over $35 million by having the highest rating possible. That concludes my report, Deputy Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Valenti?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped Mrs. Nara.
You can't, you can't skip me tonight. I have exciting stuff. Thank you, Deputy Director.
My first day on the job.
Yes, 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 yes. On March 25th, 2017, the Division of Solid Waste conducted its first 2017 paper shred event in the township of Old Bridge. This event set a new county record for paper recycling. 25,160 pounds of paper from over 570 county residents was collected and recycled. Throughout 2017, the county will host 18 additional shredding opportunities for county residents. To check for a location, date, and time convenient for residents, kindly visit, and I've been given a long address, but I'm gonna say, our county website is wonderful, and it's very easy to navigate, and you should check on the website, you can find the shred schedule, and personally, I Google "Middlesex County Shred 2017," I always find it. I'm, actually am excited about this, because prior to becoming a freeholder, I used the shred event at least six times a year, so this is a wonderful thing, and everyone ought to participate. On Saturday, April 1st, 2017, the Middlesex County Recycling Division sponsored its first 2017 e-waste recycling drop-off day. It was a very cold, wet, and blustery day. I stopped by, and I think the county residents should be so appreciative of the county staff. They were out there and working very, very hard, and it was actually quite amazing to see, because the event was held at Papanani Park in Edison, and Middlesex County residents were afforded the opportunity, free of charge, to recycle e-waste products, which included computers, televisions, monitors, keyboards, and the like. And this event was so well-attended, over 500 county residents recycled 65,150 pounds of televisions, 4,902 pounds of monitors, and 4,500 pounds of computers. And if you could have seen the flats, the size of the flats that were being loaded up on this truck to distribute all of this waste in a environmentally safe manner, you really would have been happy to see this. This department, as well as the entire division, is doing an excellent job. So, the board also wants to thank the townships of Old Bridge and Edison, and all the dedicated workers who came out and participated in making these particular programs a success. One of the most popular locations in the county, to change to a different topic, for county residents to walk is the Middlesex Greenway, which will be the site of a health walk this Saturday, April 8th, beginning at 9:30 AM. The event is held in celebration of the Rails to Trails Conservancy's fifth annual opening day for trails, during which walkers and athletes from throughout the US are invited to explore trails in their own communities. The Middlesex Greenway is a former rail corridor that spans 3.5 miles through Metatchen, Edison, and Woodbridge. Walkers will meet for the event at the Metatchen Trailhead on Middlesex Avenue, otherwise known as County Route 501. JFK nurses will lead the walk and be on hand to offer tips and answers about the many aspects of walking as exercise. Information will also be available about the Middlesex County Offices of Parks and Recreation and Health Services. After the walk, participants are invited to stay and experience the Greenway at their own pace. Any questions concerning the event can be directed to John Dowd at 732-745-3135. And that concludes my report, Deputy Director.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Freeholder Blanque de Valente.
Thank you, Freeholder Deputy Director. On March 28th, the Office of Aging and Disabled Services held a meeting with the ADA coordinators from 18 municipalities to discuss best practices related to the Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting, which was the first of its kind in the county and in the state, included presentations by an access specialist on municipal issues related to ADA, and from John Dowd, Division Head from the Middlesex County Office of Health Services, on public health preparedness and public health education. We look forward to continuing to work with our municipal partners to address accessibility and improve the quality of life of our residents with disabilities. And from our Human Services Office, the Division of Children's Services, along with community agency partners, is sponsoring a drug awareness and prevention program at the East Brunswick Community Arts Center on April 19th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. Called, in quotes, "Hidden in Plain Sight," the program will offer participants the opportunity to go through a mock-up of a teen's bedroom to see if they can identify the warning signs of risky behaviors. An agent from the Federal Drug Enforcement Agency and a behavioral health specialist will then share information on the indicators hidden in plain sight within that bedroom and lead a discussion with the audience. And that's the end of my report, Deputy Director.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to announce that we have added another 26.1 acres of land to our open space preservation program. The heavily wooded property along Gravel Hill Road, Gravel Hill Spotswood Road in Monroe was a joint purchase with the township of Monroe. The Freeholder Board allocated $400,000 from the Middlesex County Space and Recreation and Farmland Historic Trust Fund. Monroe Township contributed $50,000 towards the purchase. Like the 106-acre story farm we purchased in January, the new land has ties to the Battle of Monmouth. American patriots passed through it on their way to an important Revolutionary War battle. I want to thank the township of Monroe for helping us complete this purchase, which puts our total of open space preserved forever to more than 8,000 acres. I'd like to invite our residents to come out and see the extensive improvements that have been completed this past year at three of our county golf courses. The courses have been updated from essentials to amenities, including green, sand traps, and clubhouses. The golf court fleet has also been expanded, and more enhancements are on the way. I want to thank our partners with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority, which operates the courses, for helping to bring these new and exciting changes to our golf courses. So be sure to come out and play at Round at Tamara Golf Course in East Brunswick, the Medals in Middlesex, and Plainsboro, and Ranton Landing in Piscataway. For more information, visit the Middlesex County Improvement Authority website at www.mciouth.com. And recently, at a board meeting, too, they approved an architect to look at our golf courses to make some really big changes that you'll see in the near future. And I also had the opportunity to speak with a Mercer County freeholder, and I asked, you know, if we can, you know, use their courses, and they come and use our courses for an in-county course price. So we're gonna work on that together, and hopefully we can accomplish that. And lastly, as Freeholder Liaison to the Middlesex County Utilities Authority, I'm providing an update to two major MCUA infrastructure projects. As you're aware, the MCUA facilities were significantly impacted by super storms and sandy. The construction projects, one at the Edison Pump Station and the other at the Saraville Pump Station, will provide flood mitigation and permanent restoration to these critical facilities. These projects include flood wall construction, insulation of new electrical equipment, and other associated work related to sandy damage. These efforts are designed to protect and assist 500-year storm event. Work has begun at both facilities, and 90% of the project cost will be reimbursed by FEMA through the State of New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust Fund. And I also like to talk about the upcoming events for our World War I celebration. And I think the kickoff at the Lough House is October 22nd?
October 1st.
October 1st. Oh, that's a few days too late. My grandfather served in World War I. Came to this country in 1914, 1916, he was drafted. 1917, he was in Flanders, France, fighting the Germans. On his way to a battle, Americans were walking one way, the Germans were coming another way, but the Germans coming the other way were captured. One of the Germans took a hand grenade and threw it at my grandfather. Man next to him, which was his best friend, was killed. He was wounded and thought he was left for dead. Nurse, not nurses, but nuns found him and brought him back, and now that's why I'm here. But I know it'll be a great event, and be sure to come to it and, you know, see what's gonna happen for the next year at our community's Lough House. And as Charlie said, this month is Autism Month. I'm gonna do a resolution next meeting for Autism Month, and this past Sunday, for the first time ever, we lit up the Edison Memorial Tower blue, and it's gonna be blue for the whole month. And so if you have an opportunity to go past the tower, you'll see it in a different color. Mr. Council, do we have any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Do we have any to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any to be avoided?
There are none.
I will open up the public discussion on these resolutions, and on the resolutions only. Anyone who'd like to speak may do so now.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Charles Cradaville. You know me, I'm from New Brunswick. I'm also the editor of a community newspaper called New Brunswick Today. I'd like to ask first about an item on page 10, is number 489. Was hoping that somebody could tell me the basics of why the county does business with KMS Development Partners for their buildings, and what this $730,000 is going towards in which buildings and stuff like that. I'll continue with my questions.
Page 7.
489.
Page 7.
Oh, page 7. You said 10.
I'm sorry, page, page 7, my bad. 489, and I'll just ask all my questions, and you could follow up. The next one is on page 10. Just want to understand what the county does for goose control. Next one is on the following page, 11. I want to ask about the Future Wastewater Service Area map, and what changes are being proposed for that upcoming hearing?
Which one, Charlie? I'm sorry.
525.
525, thank you.
Thank you. And then going to page 17, I do want to ask about this contract, 577, is being rescinded and being awarded to a new bidder, which is Rutgers University. I want to know who discovered the mistake, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but there must have been a mistake made if a defective bid was accepted and awarded a contract. So I'd like to know who made the mistake, and what's being done to prevent that from happening again. And the last one I want to ask about is on page 18. Just want to know, we're number 584, who is the sheriff's officer that's gonna be traveling to Washington, DC?
Okay. John will answer the first one.
Regarding the first one with KMS, as you know, they are the managing firm that oversees any capital improvements to all of our facilities. We continue to upgrade those facilities that need to be done through capital investments. Some of the buildings are close to 20 years old, so those capital dollars will go to improvements to, you know, replacement of rugs, potential windows, but it's infrastructure facility improvements.
For this building?
For all buildings. This building and all buildings on the, here, I think the prosecutor's building, what were the two buildings? And the two courthouse's.
Okay. And I'm just, just so I can understand, the, do they own the buildings, or does the county own the buildings? Why is the, why is the county paying an outside company to do their capital improvement?
Because they're the management firm that provides the management service to the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Want the geese next? Rick?
The county currently works cooperatively and under contract with the state Department of Agriculture and Food Services, which includes grassman activities as well as nesting creatures.
Thank you. Provide that service to Sayerville as well.
The state of Sayerville does also provide services.
Thank you. The Future Wastewater Service Area?
Kalik?
You know, this is the 525.
Oh, sorry, I meant 525.
525.
I don't, I don't see 525.
It's the wastewater management that's been going on for years now?
For the sewers? It says an amendment to the...
There is an amendment to the...
And can you just tell me what's changing? Is it a specific site?
It's a site in South Brunswick that is not so commonly swayed, and there is a process that goes to the Department of Environmental Protection, whereby you apply for an amendment to get access to the sewers. and you have to do a lot of the necessary things to be able to qualify for an amendment. This is part of a thorough process of appearing to the planning board and this is obviously giving the opportunity for people to discuss.
And that was brought up to Planning Board Meeting, if I'm correct, Kalie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seventeen-eighty-four? Seventeen-five-eighty-four. Is that your last one?
And also five-seventy-seven.
Five-seventy-seven.
On five-seventy-seven.
I can do that. We were actually rescinding the contract for digital tech because they've assaulted. They, there's been problems following the slides that we're producing for the medical exam and they're not returning the slides in time. So it wasn't that we awarded a better contract or we made a mistake. We're rescinding the contract and rewarding it in the next bit.
That's time.
Thank you. And just, five-eighty-four, if I could please hear from the sponsor.
John?
On five.
Five-eighty-four. It's county service.
Sheriff's Office.
Consistent with the recommendation of the sheriff, at this point, she's not willing to. That's why who's going at this point, Tom? So if there's any issues related to that, you can talk to the sheriff directly.
Okay. I don't believe it should be a secret who gets to attend Police Week.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? May I motion to close the public portion?
Sure.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Does any freeholders have any resolutions they need to pull for a separate vote? I have seventeen-five-seven-zero. Mr. Kelsall, can you?
Yes Deputy Director. A motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of resolution number seventeen dash four-sixty-three through seventeen dash five-eighty-four, excluding resolution seventeen-five-seven to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Have a second. Roll call please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel? Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
Yes. And now it would be appropriate to consider resolution seventeen dash five-seventy, which was excluded by Deputy Director Tamaro.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So who?
Have a second. Roll call please.
Freeholder Armwood?
Yes.
Freeholder Kenny? Freeholder Koppel?
Yes.
Freeholder Nara?
Yes.
Freeholder Valenti?
Yes.
Freeholder Deputy Director Tamaro?
President not voting. Now, at this time, we'll open up to the public for any public comment.
Good evening once again, members of the board. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Want to start by expressing some frustration that I have not heard or seen any movement regarding two dangerous streets that I've brought to the county's attention, I've brought to the city's attention, I've brought to everybody's attention who will listen. French Street and Easton Avenue in New Brunswick are not safe for pedestrians. There's lots of intersections that could benefit from a simple paint job with some crosswalks and the weather's getting nice now. And so I will assume there's been no progress unless the county tells me something otherwise. The second item I wanted to ask about, you guys did have a closed session earlier today regarding a new building that's gonna be built right in this neighborhood. And I wanted to know, you know, why that discussion was done in, you know, a closed session and not in a public session. I want to know if any others were present, if any, you know, guests were present. And I also want to know if Mr. Kelso was present, and if so, who was he representing in that meeting? I'll move on to my next matter that I want to bring to the county's attention and the attention of everyone who's watching this meeting, that there is a real problem with the Middlesex County Ethics Board. You might recall I had filed a complaint against the attorney for that board because sadly, the attorney for that board is not following the law that that board is supposed to enforce. And I've been in contact with the local finance board, which is the supervisory board, the supervisory agency down in Trenton, and they've made it quite clear that if the members of a board have to file a financial disclosure form, so does the attorney. And ethics boards are no exception. And quite frankly, the entire board kind of has their credibility hurt when they have an attorney who is being unethical and not following the ethics laws. And I think that Mr. Anthony Vignolo should be immediately removed from that position and replaced. I did file a proper complaint and I was very polite in my presentation to the board. And I'd ask that anybody who wants to learn more can watch on the newbrunswicktoday.com website the Middlesex County Ethics Board meeting that took place in this very room last month where the Middlesex County Ethics Board dismissed the complaint and didn't want to really hear about it too much. And you can also watch the video of the New Brunswick Ethics Board where they actually did the right thing and they decided to start investigating Mr. Vignolo. And I think it's sad when the New Brunswick Ethics Board is behaving more ethically than the Middlesex County Ethics Board. And every county resident should be concerned about this because the Ethics Board has a role to play in keeping our government honest. So I hope that the freeholders share my concern. I hope that you will encourage the Ethics Board here in Middlesex County to make this important change that they need to make to preserve their own credibility. The last issue I want to raise is about the sheriff. I noticed, you know, she's not here tonight. Tonight she has a good excuse. She's being honored. But I can't recall the sheriff coming to any of these meetings in the past year since I raised concerns about the undersheriff. And I'd like folks to, if you want to learn more, check out an article that was published on April twenty-six called "Under Sheriff Silent As Rumors Swirl About Warrant At His Home." And in that article, you'll find out that the rumor was that the undersheriff basically told sheriff's officers, sworn officers on the fugitive unit, to stand down while attempting to execute an arrest warrant for someone who lived in his home. Had that address, the undersheriff. And I've raised these concerns before at these meetings. I did bring that to the Attorney General's attention after seeing him come visit as the Freeholder Director had recommended. And I have not heard back from the Attorney General's office yet. But I will let you know that an attorney who I quoted in the article said that the lack of any information from the sheriff's office is disturbing. And he also said that those allegations, that rumor being out there unfairly tarnished the vast majority of law enforcement officers who execute their duties fairly unjustly every day. And he said that an investigation must be conducted and the result must be public. And I can't agree more. This has been basically out there for a year. Can I please hear if anyone has investigated this, whether or not the undersheriff told sworn officers on the fugitive unit to stand down while they were attempting to execute a warrant at his home?
Mr. Kelsall, have any comment?
I have no idea.
That's time.
Can I hear about the other issue?
Mr. Warner, has there been any studies done on the two county roads that Mr. Cradaville's brought up?
Yeah, people are looking into them and we're waiting for the weather to turn. You can't put that tripping.
Right, exactly.
First of all, with regard to the Ethics Board, obviously you were there. The Ethics Board found differently and based upon research by the county council's office and the opinion that was issued to them. And I can't speak to what the New Brunswick Ethics Board did, but if you indicated that they'd conducted an investigation, they're conducting an investigation, that doesn't mean that they found differently. It just means they didn't proceed as fast as we did.
Yeah, really quick, yeah.
Yeah. And as far as closed session concerned, we're not making any comment about closed sessions.
Who were you there representing?
I'm not gonna answer any question about what transpired in a closed session matter.
Charlie, your time is up.
You represented the developer, but you were also representing the county at the same time.
Charlie, your time is up. Thank you.
That's a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the public portion? May I have a motion to close the public portion?
Sure.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
May I motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.